I'd like to welcome everyone. We're going to call this meeting, regularly scheduled meeting of Greer City Council, to order November 11th, 2025. By the way, Veterans Day. I'd like to send out our most sincere thank you to all veterans, of which we have many on our staff. And of course, this is a kind of a hotbed of veterans in the upstate and in this state. And had it not been for Kings Mountain and Cowpens, we might be speaking British right now. So that's kind of where it all started going downhill. To start this meeting, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Judy Albert if she would do our pledge of allegiance and invocation for council. Please stand.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight thanking you for the day that you've given us. We thank you for each and every day that we are able to get up and move and do your will. We pray that you'll be with us through this meeting. And with it being Veterans Day, dear Lord, I just pray that you will bless each and ever veteran that has served and that's also the ones that are serving now to protect our country. And I pray, dear Lord, that this nation will always remain one nation under God. Be with us at this meeting this evening, and I pray that you'll be with us all as we leave to go home. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Judy. Now, I'd like to call to your attention a public hearing. This is for the Comprehensive Plan Five-Year Update and Future Land Use Map. The ordinance is number 29-2025, which we will cover more in depth later. But for the public hearing, the ordinance of the city of Greer, South Carolina, to adopt the Greer Comprehensive Plan Five-Year Update, consistent with requirements of South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Planning Act of 1994. In anticipation of us voting on that, do we have anyone here? I'll ask one time that would like to address our current five-year plan or any questions about it. I will ask a second time if we have anyone wishing to address council. And a third time if we have anyone wanting to speak on the comprehensive plan. If not, we'll call that public hearing to a close, and we'll proceed with our regular scheduled meeting. First off is the minutes of the council meeting of October the 28th. I will entertain a motion and a second for those.
So motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or corrections for Ms. Duncan? If not, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas, excuse me, Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
That takes us to the administrator's report. Mr. Mayorman?
Mr. Bettis, council, thank you very much. Just a few quick reminders. It is holiday season again, so if you haven't seen our public services team out decorating the poles, both downtown and up Point Set, they are decking the halls over the next few days, so it's a very exciting time. With that, I would like to point you to something that we're doing that's a little bit new this year. We are hosting a sensory Santa. This is a sensory-friendly event designed for children of all ages and abilities to enjoy a quiet, relaxed holiday experience. They receive private 15-minute visit with Santa. Families and service animals are welcome. Cost is $20 per time slot for non-residents and $15 for City of Greer residents. See our Facebook page for more information or call events to purchase tickets. Along that, the Holiday Arts Fair will be the City of Greer Center for the Arts on Saturday, November 22nd. This is going to be an indoor market experience featuring wildlife ambassadors from local rescues, with an opportunity to support community programs through the Empty Bowls Project, which raises funds for local after-school and summer programs. And finally, the Farmer's Market will be this Friday, November 14th, from 4:30 to 8:00. Good food, live music, vendors, and chili cook-off, so please make sure you attend the Farmer's Market. Mr. Bettis, council, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Duncan, did we have anyone for public forum?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to appointments to boards and commissions. The Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee Hospitality Industry Representative Bill Tyler's term will expire at the end of the year, and General Public Representative Candace Good's term will expire end of the year. Do we have any word on those?
Yes, sir. The, they're up for recommendation for reappointment if it's council's desire.
Both?
Yes.
Okay. Can I do those in one motion?
Probably separate.
Two, please.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion on Mr. Tyler.
So moved.
And a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on that regarding? No?
I'm just going to give a shameless plug. Bill Tyler has been a great friend over the years. Actually was his employee for some time, and just glad to continue to see him serve in this capacity.
Good. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
We'll entertain a motion for Candace Good's term.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments for Ms. Good? Hearing done. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
The Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Greg Crusco, P.E.'s term will expire 12/31/25.
He would also like to continue to serve if it's council's desire.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion for Mr. Crusco.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments on that one? No? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
That takes us to old business. First off, second and final reading of ordinance number 23-2025, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Bennett Center Ventures LLC, located at 300 Bennett Center Drive, from office professional to medium density. Ms. Cotty?
Hi, thank you. I don't have any updates, but happy to answer any questions you may have.
We'll entertain a motion and a second to open the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open for any questions about this one?
The, refresh my memory, the intended use?
Single-family residential.
And so that's, I am assuming that all of that land, although it was going to be developed as office space or offices, was there some sort of, like a HOA, but for the, who signed off that, hey, this is okay?
Yeah, there were deed restrictions recorded on all but two properties, and this is one of them. So they are not restricted to office park only.
When you say single-family residential, is it going to be like a multi-unit?
Uncertain. They haven't submitted a site plan. I've seen a couple different iterations of what they may do. They would like to do a single-family detached with small setbacks on the side, but we don't have a site plan under review at this point.
Is this the same one the architect came?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he's the one who said that it's going to be townhouses. I believe that's what he spoke about.
That's what I thought it was.
It may be their latest.
Yeah, because we asked about how the finishes were to be on the outside, and he thought it would be brick or something like that.
So you don't think there's any material restrictions, I know, at least for that area?
They're not in this area. They're not located in the downtown overlay or the entryway overlay.
Oh, I was saying deed restrictions, you know.
Oh, no, no, sir.
Any questions? Comments? Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Old business two, second and final reading of ordinance number 24-2025, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain piece of property owned by Dennis Kiff and Emily Kiff, located at 205 West Arlington Avenue, from suburban neighborhood to traditional neighborhood. Ms. Cotty?
Thank you. I don't have any updates on this one either, but happy to answer any questions.
We'll entertain a motion and a second to open the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
And this was just going to be a single-family home, I mean, one?
Yes, there is an existing single-family home. They are looking to build an accessory structure, a garage, and they would like it to be five feet instead of 10 feet.
Yes, right.
Any other questions? Not? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
That takes us to new business. First reading of ordinance number 25-2025, an ordinance amending the business license ordinance of the city of Greer to update the class schedule as required by Act 176 of 2020. Mr. Klein?
Thank you. Good evening, council. Act 176, the Business License Standardization Act establishes a standard class schedule, whereas businesses are placed into classes using the latest edition of the North American Industry Classification System Code. Class schedule must be updated every two years and approved by ordinance, which is why I'm here in front of you all down tonight, giving you a quick update on the changes that'll be made. We have, we have six changes that will be made. NAICS Code 21 Mining, we will be going from a Class 2 to a Class 3. NAICS Code 48-49 Transportation and Warehousing will be going from a Class 1 to a Class 2. Those two are both increases. NAICS Code 53 Real Estate and Rental and Leasing will be going from a Class 7 down to a Class 6. NAICS Code 54 Professional Scientific and Technical Services will be going from a Class 5 down to a Class 4. NAICS Code 62 Healthcare and Social Assistance will be going down from a Class 4 to a Class 3. And finally, NAICS Code 81 Other Services will be going from a Class 4 down to a Class 3. With that, be happy to stand for any questions.
We'll entertain a motion and a second to open the floor.
So moved.
Second. Floor is open for questions. I'll do the first. We don't have a lot of mining in Greer, do we?
Correct. We have no, we have no businesses under mining. Yes, sir.
And I'm assuming when it lowers the class, that will lower the cost?
Of the, of the business license? Correct. Yes, sir.
Very good.
Correct.
Now, the, the classification, the one through, what, nine, I believe it is?
Correct. Class one through nine.
That is staff's recommendation, or is that?
It's set by, it's set by the MASC, and the rates are actually set by you all as council, but the actual classifications are set and proposed by the MASC.
And all of this was done?
Back in 2021 due to the Act 176.
As a result of the state legislature, right? Because they, somebody wanted to just?
Correct. They were trying to have?
This is part of the Business License Standardization Act of 2020. Y'all passed it in 2021, and then it was required to be passed by all councils, levying a business license by the end of 2021.
Make it uniform throughout the state.
And it was required by the state.
Yes, sir. Yes, this is a state requirement, and this is just for, this action today, y'all's action and consideration today of the NAICS codes change is in keeping with the requirements of 176.
And they all did increase one or decrease one, so no substantial change.
Now, we still are putting our resident contractors at a disadvantage when they're competing with a contractor outside the city for a job inside the city, correct? Because they have, they have to pay their business license based on 100% of their sales, whether it's in California, New Mexico, and then the city of Greer.
If they are able to prove they, they paid a business license fee in another municipality account, correct, would be what they would be able to deduct, correct?
Yeah, I would like to see some kind of relief to make our resident contractors competitive. And it's not anything, from what I remember, all of this came out from this act, I believe, and it wasn't anything that we did. It was, it was a standard, part of the state center.
Somebody wanted to get rid of them.
Right, but what I'm saying, as far as our contractor, I don't think we should have anybody in our city competing for business inside our city to be at an economic disadvantage to someone that's in the county, adjoining county or somewhere else.
Is there some way we can do that and be still, be under the law?
If I'm not mistaken, if, and this has been four years now since y'all passed it, I do believe that we took Mr. Arrowood's concerns at the time and, over a two-year period, adjusted the code, adjusted the rate to where it would even out over that second or third year. If I'm, is some, and I'm looking at Heather, Heather, come on up here if you would, please. Mr. Buss, if you don't mind, Heather's our business license man.
If I remember correctly, they were given one additional year to begin to collect that money from their customer.
That's right.
Claim on their next year's business license.
That's right. Yes, sir. So to your point, Ms. Arrowood, yeah, we, council did take action directing staff to make that adjustment when we passed the Business License Standardization Act as a council. I hear your concern that it may be deeper than that adjustment made back in 2021.
We probably need to put that for, as for some discussion at some point, because we, we need to be giving city businesses the, at least a fair level playing field, if not, if not giving them a little leg up on competition for businesses outside our city.
Sure. Good policy discussion.
Any other questions, comments?
I will say, I agree with Jay. I mean, just practically, if, if I'm a contractor doing a project in the city and I have a city business license, well, I have to pass that cost off to the customer while contractor B out of lineman or some other area, they don't have that additional cost to do it in the city limits. So I think it is worth us discussing for sure.
Yeah. Would that not hold true for other businesses too?
Well, if you look at the, the, look at, I think they're like 8.1 compared to three and four, when, if you look at the class, they're, they're ranked pretty high. Construction is industrial, I think is like a nine and.
What I'm saying is, it doesn't the same apply if you hire any service from out of town? Wouldn't the same principle apply?
They, they pay their business license fee based on the project that they are going to do in the city.
Right.
Whereas a contractor, a resident contractor who has an office and presence here in, in our city, they have to pay their business license based on 100% of their sales, no matter where it is.
Is the same not true of other businesses?
Well, if you have a business that, let's say, a hardware business, they may have other locations, but they're, is, if, they're going to pay based on that, their sales in that location.
Right.
They're not having to, if they have a store here, and let's say they have a store in another state, those sales aren't combined for them to buy a business license. It's the sales they're doing at that location.
If you, this is a kind of a morbid example, but if you contract with a mortuary outside of the city of Greer, but their services are done in the city of Greer, is that not the same as using a wood mortuary as opposed to them?
The wood mortuary would, would, all right, let's be careful not to get out of the construction in, because.
That's what I asked my question, is it just construction that that applies?
This is, this is just for construction is how, that instead of paying your dollars for business license for one or two jobs that you've done in the city, then now you're having to go take into account everything you're doing outside the city. You're not, you're not doing any?
Because their business address is a city of Greer business address.
Right, yeah, right.
And the only relief you have is, like, say I work in the city of Greenville, I can deduct some of that cost. Like he was saying, you get a rebate on it, but if I'm working out in the county and some other areas, if they don't have a business license fee, you're not deducting it. So you're paying 100%.
Well, I guess my question is, how do you adjust it and still stay within the law?
The only way I know that you adjust it is you have, you have to change the actual rate that we charge per thousand.
Yes, sir. So just to kind of try and bring this back in a little bit, Mr. Arrowood's point is well-made, and I do think it's a larger policy discussion that we need to discuss, specific to that industry, and making any necessary adjustments that could be made under the law. In this particular case, this action tonight won't consider any change at all. This is just adopting those NAICS codes. So we're, we're discussing two very important things, one of which can't be addressed tonight as opposed to this action. So to answer that question, we can certainly work on just some, some cursory information for y'all between first and second reading, just so you have, but I do think it's a longer discussion that needs to be had as we go into the new fiscal year.
Well, I'm in favor of cutting the people in the city some slack, as long as it's, it comes within this act that we're.
Right. And I agree, because we have always said we are a business-friendly city, and if we want to, you know, continue under that, that umbrella, then I think that's one thing that needs to be addressed.
Got you. I agree. Any other comments? If not, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Thank you.
New business, Article 2, first reading of ordinance number 26-2025, an ordinance to provide for the annexation of certain properties owned by CNS Property LLC, located at 1455 West Wade Hampton Boulevard by 100% petition, and to establish a zoning classification of commercial corridor for said properties. She's back.
Thank you, Mr. Bettis and council. So this is an annexation request. It does, it is two parcels located on West Wade Hampton Boulevard, surrounded somewhat by city properties, one of our mini donut holes. Currently, it's unzoned Greenville County. They are requesting to annex and zone to commercial corridor. The intended use is an auto repair facility. This is an aerial map, again, kind of showing the proximity. This is the current zoning map. The pink property that you see is all corridor commercial. The light green is rural residential. And then finally, our future land use map. This area, not this particular piece, since it's not in the city, but the adjacent future land use is identified as suburban and commercial. Here are the existing conditions on the site. And then again, the request is to annex and zone to commercial corridor. Surrounding uses are primarily commercial on that Wade Hampton corridor. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff does recommend approval, and Planning Commission will have a public hearing next Monday evening. Happy to answer any questions.
We'll entertain a motion and a second to open the floor.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions on this? By the way, I used to live right across the highway from there.
What, I'm trying, I thought that's where it was. Can you bring up the last, not, yes, that slide there?
That's where they had the metal buildings.
There were a lot of buildings, yes. There were like sheds all over, yes. You're not remembering incorrectly. It's just been cleaned up.
And to the left of it, left of this site, that's where the, is a pool supply?
Yeah, there's a little.
I believe so, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I do believe the applicant is here if you have questions.
Okay.
In situations where we, you mentioned that it was going to be auto.
Uh huh.
Are they required to tell us that information ahead of time, or?
They are not.
Okay.
They're only required to request a zoning, and then anything within that zoning that would be allowed by right would be kind of open-ended.
Will the applicant or the representative of the applicant, please raise your hand? You available for questions? If so, be it. All right.
Well, I will ask since they said it. I mean, are we looking at a five-minute old change, or are we looking at an auto repair?
It's auto repair.
Would this be like a chain or a?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can you mention the name?
Um, that's a great question. Um, yeah, I mean, I don't think it's confidential. Uh, I'm going to go into a long, get myself in trouble.
Okay, okay.
We can check with the applicant and let you know at second reading.
Yeah, understand.
I don't know that information or I would.
Personally, I like the secrecy a little more better, so then, you know, now everybody on social media is going to say, you know, we're getting this, getting that. Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Article 3, first reading of ordinance number 27-2025, an ordinance to provide for the annexation of certain properties owned by AGWG 3085 Holdings LLC, located at 3019 South Highway 14, 3021 South Highway 14, and 3035 South Highway 14 by 100% petition, and to establish a zoning classification of commercial corridor for said properties. Ms. Cotty?
Thank you. Again, this is another annexation request. This particular request is for two parcels. The ordinance 28 that will be immediately after this is also part of this overall project, but it has a different ownership, so there are going to be two ordinance numbers, but again, kind of a related project. So just wanted to let you know upfront, the three parcels together are about 14 and a half acres. So again, they are asking to annex into the city of Greer. This is located on Highway 14 near the Pelham Batesville intersection, and they are asking for commercial corridor zoning. This is an aerial map of the property. Again, it's across the street from the fire station. This is a zoning map. Again, there's not a lot of our city of Greer property along this corridor. The closest is Watawash and then the Pelham Crossing corridor with the DRD Flex Buildings and Bank and future gas station. This is adjacent, it backs up to River Reserve, which is a DRD project. This is the future land use map. Again, it backs up to suburban neighborhood. The properties along Highway 14 that are in the city are suburban commercial. Currently, these are residential properties with single-family residences. And then again, their request is to annex and zone to commercial corridor. It is surrounded by a variety of residential and commercial uses. Across the street from an institutional use is a fire station. The comprehensive plan, excuse me, is not suburban commercial. It is mixed employment. Staff does recommend approval. Planning Commission will have a public hearing, but they have not yet. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
We'll entertain a motion and a second to open the floor.
So moved.
Second. And the floor is. And the floor is open. That does con conform with the comprehensive plan, right?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Cotty, if I may put them on the spot, I would love for Council to hear the concept that is at least planned tentatively for this, because I'm pretty excited about the idea of what, you know, of what's at hand.
I wasn't sure what all I was at liberty to share, but I'd love to have the applicant. I defer to them.
Is the applicant or a representative present? Would you please come to the podium, please? State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Thank you for having me. My name's Ben Bauer. I'm at one oh two High Plains Road in Simpsonville. So our planned use for this property and the adjoining is a car club. So our goal is to build a car storage and clubhouse facility where we'll store classic and high-end cars in a kind of museum-style layout, both in a in a larger open storage area in a big building as well as in private garages. And so our goal is to bring together like-minded car enthusiasts and give them a place to store their car and to meet other people with similar passion, and that's our hope for the project, so.
Is this project going to be, I guess, open to the public or just members of the club?
So we plan to do, it'll be a members-only club, but we plan to do lots of public events as well as, I was talking with Councilman Hopper about doing some city events that we love to host, and we love to host all kinds of, any car enthusiast is welcome to come, and we we're passionate about trying to involve everybody in the community in it, and we love to do that any way we can.
More than just a big garage, but it needs space for, you know,
Yeah.
centered around cars and car lovers.
Exactly, yes.
Any particular type of automobile?
No, we really, it's anyone who has a passion for cars, whether it's classics or sports cars or anything. That's our, that's our goal, so.
Mr. Bauer or Ms. Cotty, can you speak to the buffering along the backside of the property that's just natural as well as what would be required, you know, between the residential and anything that's done on this on the site?
Sure, yeah, there's there's plenty. We plan to keep a large amount of green space, even there's a on the backside, and there's a lot of land between the residential and then all the way up. I doubt they'll really see us that much or definitely won't hear us, so we're we're definitely gonna be up on the road is the plan, so we should have a good buffer.
Oh, thank you. So again, we haven't done a site development plan yet, but just with the zoning of commercial corridor versus a DRD, we look at the closest zoning district, which in this case would be suburban neighborhood, and so they would be required to do either a type-three or type-four buffer, which it requires a wall and planted area, and there's also, I believe, some flood plain that they'll be working with in the back that they will not be developing. We do also require a 10% tree save area, so again, they'll most likely be leaving that area in the back undisturbed, but we won't know that till we have a site site plan. Does that answer your question?
It does, yeah. I know we had generally discussed that, but just for the sake of our discussion, I had to point that out.
Thank you.
I think that's that was really the only thing, and you guys did a good job of addressing that even before. I'm personally excited what you guys are considering and trying to bring to, you know, be a part of the city of Greer. I think it's a good fit for the area and a lot less intensive a use, it feels like to me, than a lot of potential, you know, establishments that could have come to that to that spot in or in or out of the city, for that matter.
Thank you. Here, we're excited and hope to hope you approve our request.
Seems pretty low impact. That's a good thing. Any other questions or comments? If not, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowhead?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Yes, excuse me. Mr. Bettis?
Yes. Moving to item four, First Reading of Ordinance Number Twenty-Eight Dash Twenty-Twenty-Five, an ordinance to provide the annexation of a certain property owned by Highway fourteen Cars LLC located at thirty eighty-five South Highway fourteen by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of commercial corridor for said property.
Thank you. So this is the third parcel that's part of the same project that we just discussed. It is just under a different ownership. So the intent is to, once they're properly zoned, to combine the three properties once the sale goes through. So again, this is one parcel that'll be combined with the adjacent parcels near the Pelham Batesville intersection along Highway fourteen, just south of the fire station. This is the zoning map. Again, it does back up to DRD, which is the Pelham River Reserve at Pelham Development, which is single-family detached. It is down the street from the Watawash and Pelham Crossing Development. This is a future land use. It backs up to suburban neighborhood, but most of the Highway fourteen corridor fronting properties are designated as mixed employment. And then this is the current street view existing conditions. It's again, a single-family residential use. They are asking to annex and zone to commercial corridor. Again, they're surrounded by a mix of residential and commercial and institutional. The comprehensive plan is mixed employment, and this is compatible request. Staff does recommend approval, and Planning Commission will hold a public hearing next week.
We'll entertain a motion to open the floor.
So moved.
Say.
Motion and second, and floor is open. Is the owner or a representative of the owner with us same? Okay, you have anything to add to this? Okay, Council?
This total area, fourteen acres, including this one, or was that just the other two?
Yes, sir. The two, the two are seven point four nine, and then this parcel by itself is six. It's about total of fourteen and a half.
Of all three?
Yes, mm-hmm. So it is these two.
I will agree with you, Mark, because I, these properties been for sale for some time, and I was apprehensive. I was like, man, if they're gonna try to fit homes in there, that's gonna be tough site. So I was glad to see a creative solution.
Any other questions or comments? Good. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowhead?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes. Article Five, First Reading of Ordinance Number Twenty-Nine Dash Twenty-Twenty-Five, an ordinance of the city of Greer, South Carolina, to adopt the Greer Comprehensive Plan Five-Year Update, consistent with requirements of South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Planning Act of nineteen ninety-four. This is what we had the public hearing for earlier this evening. Ms. Cotty's gonna explain the entire thing.
I will summarize it, and you guys feel free to stop me with questions along the way. So this is a five-year update to the comprehensive plan. We adopted Transforming Greer twenty thirty, which again is kind of a ten-year look at our future. It is a strategic document that talks about the community's vision for how we grow. It is not a code or ordinance. It is not binding like our UDO. It is a decision-making tool that staff, Planning Commission, Council use to make zoning decisions and to help prioritize our investments and our dollars in our budget. So why are we updating it? It's good practice in such a fast-growing area to take a look at it. Ten years is a really long time for a city like Greer that is growing as fast as we are, but the Enabling Act and state law also requires us to take a look at it. So we, most of what this document entails is some updated data and trends, document some of our progress towards goals. It does have a few updates to the future land use map, and then it does also have a standalone resilience element. So the, we'll talk a little bit more about this in the last slide with with the resilience element, but the Enabling Act was updated in twenty twenty to require a tenth element. Before that, there were nine required elements for comprehensive plan that you had to touch on. Again, they're ranging from population, natural resources, population, land use, transportation, and kind of how all these things fit together. But back in twenty twenty, in response to a lot of the flooding incidents that we had in back in twenty seventeen, the state updated the Enabling Act to require a resilience element in addition to these other nine. Now, at the time, it was November of twenty twenty. We were already in the midst of public hearing for our Transforming Greer document, so at the recommendation of our city attorney, they did say, you know, I think you can wait to do this element until your next update. So that's why it's included in this one. It is a little bit different than our five-year updates in the past, just because we're trying to meet state law, and timing wasn't great the first time around. So we'll go over that a little bit more at the end. But again, these are the required elements of the of the comprehensive plan. The last five years, again, I mentioned, it's important for a city like us to take take a mid-decade look and make sure we're on the right track, we have the right goals, we're working towards those goals. These five years were a bit of a doozy. I'm sure you guys all remember twenty twenty. We've had some unprecedented challenges here in the upstate with the coronavirus pandemic, and that was really a global challenge, but certainly we felt that locally. And then Hurricane Helene really just brought home, again, some of the reasons why we need a resilience element. We also updated our Unified Development Ordinance, which was huge in terms of our regulations and how we look at land use, how we look at housing, how we look at transportation, things like tree save area that go with our natural resources element. It's a it's a policy document that helps us have teeth to this vision. We also, Council last year, adopted impact fees to help growth pay for growth, so that was a huge change for us. We've had quite a bit of organizational structure changes, hiring a tourism specialist. We brought economic development in-house instead of a partnership. We have a new communications and strategic initiatives department. So a lot of changes for the city, both kind of physically and internally. And then lastly, you're all familiar with four Greer. It's a huge, huge set of projects, huge investment. We're gonna talk about it in almost every element, but really our community facilities and priority investment elements, as well as, again, resiliency, our emergency response. Some of the money that we've invested is gonna help all of those services. So we're just gonna go through every element. Again, I'm not gonna read every bullet. I'm happy to if you guys want, just kind of give the highlights. But as far as population, we've continued to see really strong growth, both in the region and in the city of Greer. Esri puts our estimate at forty thousand, but in-house puts that much closer to fifty thousand people in the city. One kind of interesting factor was our net migration doubled during COVID, which was the most significant shift in the state of South Carolina during that period, and it wasn't just us. It was a couple of different counties in the upstate. That means more people came in than left. Most of our population characteristics stayed pretty similar, you know, our median age, our racial composition, gender, educational attainment. There weren't significant changes, which you don't really expect to see that in a five-year period either, but some notable, again, include the population increase, our average number of people per household increased slightly, and our median household income increased by quite a bit from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. In terms of economic development, we've kind of seen a couple different themes. One of the major ones is strengthening our downtown. Council and the community put huge investments into streetscape, and we've seen, and the parking garage, as well as the new parking garage that's part of four Greer. We've seen that pay off with new investment in the community with new multifamily, one recently opened and one currently under construction, the Greer Mill redevelopment. We've seen kind of our investment pay off with private investment. We've also really capitalized on our regional position. We know that our proximity to the inland port and major intersections have a huge advantage for us, and we've seen big, big expansions in both the inland port and the airport. We've seen a lot of new major employers come on board, too. And then finally, diversification of our industry. We think that's really important to having a resilient economy as well. We've seen a growing food and beverage manufacturing industry, and now we are seeing a huge health expansion with our Prisma campus. We have two projects currently under review with a major kind of phased development in the works. As far as natural resources, engineering and stormwater staff, with the help of a consultant, completed a pilot watershed study. They've been hard at work over the past couple of years implementing recommendations from that study with support from Council, so that's really exciting. We've also adopted new software with Cartograph to help with asset management, which again will help us get a better feel for what we have and help it get on a better schedule for maintenance, so that we're making sure we're proactive instead of reactive. The UDO has also been helpful, too, in terms of tree protection. We do have stronger tree save requirements. We've continued to forge community partnerships. We've seen recreational trail expansion. We just got the grading permit for the Tiger River Greenway today, so that's exciting. So both Ward's Creek Trail and South Tiger River Greenway. And we, again, have continued stewardship. We were named a National Community Wildlife Habitat, and I do believe that was a two-year study and a big accomplishment. Cultural resources is another element of the plan. We do have very strong cultural programming here and meeting with our PRT team. We've seen kind of our beloved staples like our fairs, our, it's not our farmer's market, but they do use our property. Symphonies, summer camps continue to grow. We've seen increased participation in almost all of our events. We had nearly twenty thousand in attendance at last year's or this year's, I guess, international festival, and then we've instituted several new multi multicultural celebrations. And I personally brought my girls to the Dia de los Muertos event a week or two ago, and it was fantastic. So major kudos to our PRT team, if anyone's here. We've had improvements in public art, and then in historic preservation, we have increased our inventory with Greer Mill becoming both a local historic resource and listed on the National Register. We are very close to the first certificates of occupancy for that, so that's been a long time coming, and we're excited to see that redevelopment. Community facilities, again, that's a huge one. Council, we thank you. You guys have have put a lot of investment into the community facilities that we have. It seems like a long time ago at this point, but even the kids planted at Century Park. I think that finished and wrapped up in the twenty twenty twenty-one timeframe. That is an award-winning park, so again, major kudos to our PRT team. We've seen new facilities at Turner Park and Stevens Park this year with new basket the basketball courts and a baseball field. We've had expansion in pickleball, again, to meet emerging trends, meeting local demand. We've also introduced and strengthened our rugby program, which is really cool. The Cultural Arts Center saw a major renovation. Again, schools and childcare, they're not necessarily anything city of Greer has done, but in terms of being a community facility, we've seen a lot of expansions and site plans at at schools within our jurisdiction, including new schools, and we've seen several new childcare developments come in over the past couple of years, which is really great for our growing population, especially given the age distribution and amount of kids that we're seeing with all our single-family development. Public services, CBW's undergone some major changes, too. They did the Maple Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant expansion, and then public safety. Again, we acquired the Pelham Batesville Fire Station on Highway fourteen next to Settith Farms, and then opened new Station Forty-Two on South Super Road. And then again, we focused on trails a couple slides ago. Be remiss not to mention those as well. Housing, Unified Development Ordinance, I kind of changed some of our policies to hopefully diversify our. I kind of changed some of our policies to hopefully diversify our housing stock, um, allowing more and different types of housing types by right in different um zoning districts, including townhomes, which, again, we didn't have any zoning districts that allowed them by right before the U D O. Um, we also um hope to increase missing middle housing with accessory dwelling units. Again, those were not allowed by right in any zoning district except downtown with a special exception. Um, so hoping to um help some of our older folks age in community um and open up um investment opportunities for our residents. Housing starts have continued to be strong. We've averaged over a thousand housing starts per year. I mean, sometimes that's closer to the five or six hundred range, but we've had upwards of twelve hundred. So, again, over that five-year period, we've averaged a little over a thousand. We've had nine new multifamily projects with over sixteen hundred units. I will say that's a boom. We don't necessarily expect that trend to continue, but it was kind of making up for a product that the city didn't have before. Um, and we have seen an increase of homeownership. In terms of housing value, I'm sure you all know that housing values all over the upstate are increasing. So we, of course, have seen that, and we've even seen it um greater than the greater Greenville metro area. Most of our cost-burdened um residents are either renters or homeowners under the age of thirty-five. And then we are seeing an emerging build-to-rent model. Um, the Leo Jamestown community is one, and then we've had a couple of single-family developments where um we thought they'd be individual ownership that we've seen kind of one company take them over and then rent them out. So kind of remains to be seen whether that will continue to be a trend or not, but we're kind of keeping an eye on it. Um, and homelessness, there has been a thirteen percent increase statewide. We don't have as good of data for local, um, but it does seem like we're trending similar to our neighbors.
Ashley, on the-
Yes, sir.
On the build-to-rent model, um, I remember some of these subdivisions that we approved. Did, did these investors come in after the fact? Because I don't remember them being when we approved them.
Yeah, so I will say Leo Jamestown from the get-go came in. It was a D R D project. It was kind of a new model, very dense. Um, it was duplexes that were um set very close to each other, but laid out like a neighborhood. Um, so it was always meant to be for rent, but we have had a couple of communities like Dillard Creek Village, which is a townhome community, and then the Vines Creek subdivision, um, that throughout the process, we were under the impression, I mean, it always had lot lines, right? We were always assuming they were going to be for sale to individual property owners. So I'm not sure if they knew at the beginning of the project and just didn't tell us, or if once they went to seek a builder, that that became the option. And those two were at the same time, um, so I think it might be the same investor.
Overton Park, kind of, not, not too long-
Overton Park was one of the first. That was kind of our first one, and I do believe B M W bought up a lot of those lots with the intent to um have employees that were coming in for short-term stays or when they moved here to have kind of a transitional place. Um, but yes, you're right, Overton Park was really the first one that we saw.
Ms. Cottie, you mentioned the, the multifamily projects.
Mm-hmm.
I know one thing you hear and see is, folks, it feels like there was an influx that way. We feel like that was ju- that was just filling a void of that product in our specific community.
I'm not an expert, but I have cautioned kind of our, our housing strategy assessment team, our impact fee study team, that um we don't necessarily expect to see that trend continue. That it, that, again, with townhomes, too. We've seen a real influx of those over the last five to ten years. And I will say that neighboring jurisdictions, including Greenville, have also commented on that. Um, they mentioned that at a recent conference that I was at in Greenville, the kind of influx of townhomes. Um, and I do, I think it's making up for, you know, we were primarily over the ninety percent mark, single-family detached housing. Um, and as our demographics change and the economy changes, I think we were due for, for some difference. Now, I, again, I'm not an expert, so I can't predict, but I have seen um a lot of slowing over multifamily requests the last couple of years. And in fact, two of them have asked for, um, one has changed to a townhome design, and then one has kind of abandoned plans and is looking at all kinds of different um zoning and uses. So um, just based on what I've heard and inquiries and seen, I don't expect that that trend will continue.
And when you say multifamily, you're talking about like apartments?
Apartments, yes, sir. Mm-hmm. Yeah, we typically that, those numbers especially, those are all uh multifamily units. Now, we do sometimes consider um, like duplexes for impact fees are considered multifamily, but in this case, that number is strictly apartment complexes. Any other questions before we move on? Okay, well, we'll move forward, but we can always jump back. Um, in terms of land use, again, we've not only expanded in population, but we've expanded in area by way of annexations, um, continue to bring new properties into the city and grow. Um, we've had policy updates, again, with our U D O that affect land use. Um, we do have some changes to the future land use map um proposed with this five-year update. Um, most of them are correcting um kind of errors or things that should have been a certain way in the twenty twenty plan, um, including, there are some areas that were identified as suburban commercial along the Wade Hampton Corridor. Um, again, we just kind of put a buffer on the Wade Hampton Corridor, you know, one property in either direction, and there's a lot of um neighborhoods. So we did propose to change those to traditional neighborhood in the areas that already had existing housing. Um, also, a lot of the areas um south of eighty-five, um, in that Abner Creek area, which, again, are, are mostly R twelve or D R D, um, they were identified as traditional neighborhood in the twenty twenty plan. They, they should really be suburban neighborhoods, so we're just proposing to make that update. And we did, we are proposing to change the area right around the neighborhood center. That's at the Kissed One-O-One Reedville intersection, um, where you guys will see that future Spinks um that came in with the annexation um from traditional neighborhood to suburban commercial. Again, just to, we had the neighborhood center, which kind of acts as an overlay, but we just felt like um identifying the, the land around there as um suburban commercial made more sense than residential. Um, a few more updates. We're updating some commercial areas, um, including the Exide Site that are currently labeled as manufacturing and logistics. Um, those may be the existing uses, but not necessarily the preferred long-term use around Wade Hampton. Um, so we're proposing to change those from manufacturing and logistics to suburban commercial. Um, there's also a couple of areas around South Buncombe, um, between Wade Hampton and Railroad that we're proposing to go from manufacturing and logistics to mixed employment. Again, kind of the long-term vision being less industrial and less intense uses. Um, we're also proposing to re-categorize the neighborhood center that's near the um Prisma expansion and the Sports and Events Center of the City of Greer, um, from a neighborhood center to a regional center. And then we're proposing to add neighborhood corridors along the roadways that kind of spine in and out of downtown, and those mimic the entryway corridor overlays from the zoning ordinance. All right, we've just got two more, spare with me. Transportation, we've had a lot of studies um that have happened over the last five years. Um, we've completed a downtown T I A. Um, we have a successfully applied for the Safe Streets for All program. That's going to be a safety audit of all of city roadways, um, that we should be going out for bids soon and starting early in the new year. Um, so that'll be exciting. Um, not a City of Greer initiative, but something that we've been keeping an eye on, a Ten at the Top initiative. Um, they are looking at the potential to have a mobility hub at G S P Airport. Um, and then another initiative that the city is looking into right now is a quiet crossing um to have the rail not blow their whistle when they come downtown. Um, so stay tuned over the next five years to see the progress towards that. And we've had a lot of infrastructure improvements. The roundabout at Gibbs Shoals and Wes Phillips was one of our most dangerous intersections with quite a few fatalities. Um, this was completely developer-funded by the apartment. Um, that, so we have seen that come in and be, um, that was one of the first projects that came in after council approved updates to the T I A ordinance um in twenty twenty-one. S C D O T projects along North Main and East Point Set with the road diets. Um, we did see the Bible Brook Bridge closure, which is not necessarily a, a good improvement, but it is a big change that we've seen. Um, and then we do have some planned improvements coming at the Chick Springs and South Super intersection um right near our new fire station. Um, so D O T is initiating that, but um they've been kind of keeping us in the loop as a stakeholder. So it'll be nice to see some changes out there. And of course, maintenance, um, council's been very responsible over the last five years, um, authorizing paving dollars and, and annual maintenance. And our public services and engineering departments have been hard at work doing um repair of both pavement and sidewalks. Finally, priority investment, again, this one's huge. Um, the four Greer initiative shows um the priorities of the city and the investment that we're willing to make in our continued growth. Um, that includes the public safety training facility on Hood Road, uh, the Sports and Events Center that's under construction. Um, a poten- the future Depot Street parking garage, and then another future fire station up near um the Blue Ridge Plantation neighborhood for, again, continued growth in the northern area of time. Additionally, as I mentioned in the beginning, impact fees, um, huge change for us and a really important step for helping um have new growth pay for that new growth and the impact that they have on, on the city. And again, facilities, we've seen um Greer Golf major renovations and taking over that facility. Um, the South Highway fourteen fire station acquisition, and again, that new fire station, uh, Station Forty-two out at South Super. Um, just really amazing um investments and growth that our city has seen. So those are the nine elements. Um, again, I mentioned, we are adopting um an appendix, um, A for resiliency. This is, the format looks a little different, um, if you're looking at the big, long document. Um, it is meant to be formatted similar to our Transforming Greer twenty thirty plan because it's meant to be sort of an element add-on to that document. And again, when we do our, it'll be twenty twenty-eight and twenty twenty-nine before we know it when we're doing our major ten-year update. So we will definitely make sure to incorporate resilience into all of the elements. Um, but we are proposing to adopt a standalone. So again, this was mandated by state law. Um, the Enabling Act was amended in twenty twenty-one as response to the Disaster Relief and Recovery Act, which was in response to several flooding events that happened in the late two thousand teens. Um, so this element identifies hazards. Um, we have, we've, in the past, participated in hazard mitigation plans for both counties. Um, so this isn't something new for the city, it's just newly documented. Um, and so our area is um vulnerable to storms, extreme heat. Um, we're also unique in that, maybe not unique for this area, but unique to some other places in the state um that we, due to our proximity to the rail, um, we are vulnerable to potential transportation incidents. Um, so again, it kind of identifies hazards. It talks about some mitigation that you could do. Um, it highlights capital projects, again, the Public Safety Training Center, multiple fire stations. And we're making huge investments to help aid in emergency response, which is critical for resilience efforts. Um, again, the state, once they adot- amended the Enabling Act, they also established a state office of resiliency. Um, the South Carolina Office of Resiliency is also called SCORE. We recently had them out um to talk to a lot of our departments about resources that they can o- offer and kind of help us with our efforts. Um, but they define resiliency as the ability of communities, economies, and ecosystems to anticipate, absorb, recover, and thrive when presented with environmental change and natural hazards. So again, that's what this element um strives to address. Just like our other elements in our twenty thirty plan, um, we have high-level objectives, and we um identify strategies. And again, those are um in response to physical, community, environmental, and economic resilience. And that's all I've got for you. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
I will entertain a motion.
I got one more question.
We're, we're going to do that, to open the floor, I'll entertain a motion.
So, Miff?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Axway.
On the U S D O T, uh, was it Safe Streets? Can you explain that a little more, what that is?
Sure, it is a federal grant. Um, and in this case, it's a planning grant. So there are infrastructure or demonstration project grants that are for like on-the-ground projects. Um, this is a planning grant to do a study. So it is a safety-related study for all of the roadways and intersections within the city of Greer.
Do we think, um, because I know we implemented the impact fees, well, another component could be that transportation impact fee. Could, do we think that could be a basis of, of what we could use for that transportation impact fee? Either one?
Personally, I say yes. I'd love for Mr. Mayor to weigh in, but we, you know, as you know, impact fees do require a C I P or kind of a, a list of priorities. And yes, something that will come out of that study is a list of projects. Um, so in my opinion, yes, it could be used in the future towards a study if you were interested in amending the impact fee ordinance to include transportation.
She's right.
Good question.
Ashley, on, in the very beginning, you mentioned, um, uh, about trees and wildlife.
Mm-hmm.
Um, how do we, you know, let you get back to that.
Yeah.
Our wildlife habitat. So what are we doing to with development to create wildlife habitat?
As far as development goes on that side of things, um, most of our efforts are related to tree canopy, um, which can naturally, um, because we're asking for ten percent not to be cut down. Um, it is typically a grouped area, so it, the hope would be that some of those ecosystems that exist, um, that wildlife could stay in those areas instead of having to separate. Um, as far as the National Community Wildlife Habitat, that was a Parks and Rec um initiative, and I am not as familiar with it, but I am happy to bring back more information.
To share what I would also add, that uh, not only through, from a design perspective and ensuring that we have appropriate buffers that end up becoming natural wildlife corridors, this council, if you'll recall, has also made some strategic property purchases specifically for that reason. And I'll point to the um, the property adjacent to the golf course and those nearly seventy acres that was purchased, both on uh the north side of Country Club and then all of the property adjacent to that. Um, so while we do our best from a development U D O perspective to ensure that we have a, a healthy tree canopy, we're also looking at ways to increase density. And in the increase of density, we'll also provide more opportunities for open space, which in turn create more wildlife habitat. So there's, there's been some strategic investments made by this council, and then through its design standards into the U D O, by default, are affecting a posi- having a positive effect on it.
Yeah, and, 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 yes, and that's, I, I, I appreciate that. I guess the, the follow-up question is, when you said ten percent and you're talking about tree canopies and things like that, what was your jumping-off point for the ten percent as far as saying, well, this is, this is what we need to do? This is what we need to actually make a requirement? And um, when we talk about tree canopy and we also talk about open spaces and green spaces and all that stuff, do, or do we actually have a, a not a definition, but I guess a, the, why we are doing that? That, that it's actually based on something besides it looks good or- That it's actually based on something besides it looks good or we just don't, we just don't want, you know, completely open, in the complete graded down, stripped down ground? And then what drives that is this question about, well, what are we trying to achieve with our open space, our green space? Because if it is for wildlife habitat, then, okay, that's great. You know, if you go back and look at the diaries from explorers who came to South Carolina before there was a lot of human impact, there wasn't this thickness in Piedmont where we are of, you know, just massive.
Forested.
It was more savanna-like. And so I didn't know if we were trying to attempt to do that or, you know, the reasoning is, is, plays a big deal with me. And, and I think it's a great thing that you have a tree canopy and you're talking about these wildlife habitats, but we need to make sure when we're doing this that we're basing it on some science. That has to play into it because, you know, there's a lot of wildlife, but I think a lot of times, we, when we talk about wildlife, we think about the cute and cuddly. We don't talk about the slitherly, the slimy, the, you know, the box turtles, that kind of thing. We don't talk about that. But, and I think that needs to be part of our discussions as we move forward, looking at tree protection and, and how we, how we ask others to develop their land.
We will certainly keep that in mind, both for the charismatic megafauna and those of lesser species.
Well, I mean, are we trying, are we trying to?
I hear you.
Habitat for elk?
I hear you. Mastodons. I hear you. Yes, sir.
No, I completely agree.
The best argument I know of to preserve trees is to replenish oxygen. There's a severe, I'm not going to get into chemtrails, but there is a lot of validity there. I have to talk to you about that, Jay. But there is, there are, trees are being decimated. They really are.
We need to decimate some more pine trees, that's all we need.
I don't say I love pines, but I do, I do love trees.
Yeah. No, I think you make a great point, and my answer would typically be yes and. You know, as we've talked about all these elements, you know, I've mentioned different things in several different elements. I think our goals, especially our natural resource goals and objectives that are identified in the comprehensive plan, that is what guided us to then make some changes with our policy.
Yeah. And you know me, I'm always asking, and I think that we all need to ask when we start to implement something is why? Taking it all the way back to the very basics of why are we doing this?
No, I agree with you, and I think there's, I don't think there's one answer, right? I do think it's important to keep a healthy tree canopy for wildlife, but it also helps our environment by giving us more oxygen and taking CO2 out of the air. So there's usually multiple goals that certain things accomplish or meet. So I don't think there's one particular. But when we, when we did update the UDO, again, it was very intentional. We did study best practices, we did look at other jurisdictions in the upstate to try and find that magic number. Is it the right number? I'm not sure. But we kind of had to start somewhere and we came at sort of a healthy medium.
Kind of piggybacking off what Jay is talking about, I know a lot of developments now are coming across that have a 100-year floodplain, like even tonight, I believe, you mentioned there were some properties. Is it worth us investigating some of these projects, whether we work with an outside organization to, you know, put some of these 100-year floodplanes in conservation areas? I'm just thinking out loud, it was something that came to mind when Jay was talking, but is that worth our time to investigate, to be actively approaching these developments?
I would certainly say it's worth our time. I mean, how we direct staff resources and then our policies really comes at the direction of city council. But I think our stormwater folks and our floodplain managers would probably have a lot to say about that. We did talk about it a little bit at our resilience workshop that we had with SCORE, the Office for Resiliency. And I think we're seeing, you know, what used to be the 100-year flood is a lot more often than 100 years now. So I definitely think there's value in taking a look at those.
Well, now, let's not say that, because I know we were referring back to Hurricane Helene, and that was, and that actually.
That was like 500, 100-year flood event.
That was 100, I mean, but that was within 100 years since the last that actually happened. So anyway.
That area of North Carolina has been hit four times since it was 100 years ago.
Well, 1915 is what I'm referring.
That was the 100-year, but they've been hit four more times since then. Hey, I'm not joking, climate change, I'm just giving you the facts.
Statistical.
Any other questions? About our young men in the front row, you guys have any questions? Okay. Thought I'd check.
They're ready for dinner, I bet.
Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettes?
Yes. Item six, Greer City Council to 2026 meeting schedule. I will ask for a motion and a second.
Second.
All right. Any comment? No. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettes?
Yes. Number seven, Van de Venter Drive, Bonds Career Center, traffic concerns. Mr. Booker.
Yeah, this was the item we had last council meeting. We had the video from, I believe, Eddie and Mark, I believe, the other guys, gentleman's name. But I wanted to kind of bring this up because I think there was a lot of, I mean, the video overwhelming evidence of there is an issue. And also, over the past few weeks, I've had a chance to walk through that community and also off Pine Street Extension. But apparently, between Van de Venter and Pine Street Extension, that problem is, is pushed to that area as well, because when the school folks are going to the Bonds Center, they come up 14, cut across Pine Street Extension through that community, blowing through stop signs, and then make a right onto Wade Hampton to get over to Van de Venter and that area over there. So I really think it'd be nice for our staff to take a look at it and figure out what is some solutions for this issue.
We'll take a look at it and bring some recommendations back to this council.
As a side to that, I went down there today and parked on the side of the road and watched as Bonds was letting out. Couple of things I'd like to report. The city has, we have our portable speed limit sign that I think it faces up Van de Venter, and you would see it driving towards Bonds. The other one is one that's actually permanently mounted, and you see it as you're going away from Bonds on Van de Venter. The interesting thing that I saw is that, well, the cars that veered off and went down, Cunningham? They never slowed up, they just keep going. When they went to Van de Venter and they saw that they're speeding on that sign, they immediately slowed down. There was only one car that never slowed down, and they were doing, according to that sign, 45 miles an hour, which is, you know, way out of, you can't have that. And so something really, really needs to be done there, as far as actually bringing traffic to a stop in, on Cunningham and Van de Venter. Because if, if we don't bring them to a stop and then have something that, if all we do is stop signs, they're gonna do like they do now, like shown in the video, they're not gonna stop for the stop signs, they're gonna blow through. We need to do something to impede or to discourage that.
Yeah, I think, you know, last meeting they brought up, and I never realized it or it didn't cross my mind, was the growth we're expecting, you know, the growth we have here in the area is proportional as well to that Bonds Center. And so that, that issue is growing as well. So I didn't even think about making that illusion that there are more students going to that center, so that problem is getting bigger too.
Very good. We'll look forward to that.
Yes, sir.
Number eight, employee insurance and strategic planning. Mr. Arrowood.
Yes, sir, thank you. Strategic planning, you know, we have had that, we've had a strategic plan before and some very good ideas and goals and objectives, not only for short-term, but medium-term and very long-term. And we've kind of worked through all of that, and now it's time to refresh. And so I believe we're gonna try to get together January?
Probably, hopefully, third week of January.
Okay. Just what I would recommend about that is not that we're trying to, we are trying to micromanage, but the, the thoughts and ideas that we have, that the direction we would like to see the city go, that, to make sure that our staff knows what we think and which way, so they can, they can plan accordingly with their budgets and things of that. Insurance, that is a, the insurance that we provide our folks, our employees, is a huge part of their benefits package. And we've always said that we have a top-shelf benefits package. And I would like to make sure that we do by having Mr. Mayorman or whoever bring in someone who could talk to us about the future with, for insurance premiums, the future of healthcare, how we can do it and provide a top-shelf health benefit for our employees, which includes knowing exactly what our coverage does and does not do. I have had two instances myself recently, and I found out a few things. One is I had to have some imaging done, and I was gonna have it done at one of our hospital systems. They called to say you owe, you will pay X amount of dollars, which were, which was approaching a thousand bucks. But then they could not tell me how they arrived at that number. So I just picked up the phone and I started calling some private imaging centers, and it was 1,000 versus 340. And so, of course, I went to the private, and it gave me everything they, they could have gotten. But what bothers me is that when I was asking the representative from this hospital system, "How do you come up with this?" Well, I don't know, but I do know that the hospital systems and the insurance carriers, they all get together and negotiate this out. One, that's just not, that's collusion, but we, we don't need to have our folks, if they have something that, where they have to have this medical attention, they don't need to be making additional calls. They don't need to be fighting with someone who sits behind a telephone and they're just a customer service rep, and they're reading off a script. We need to make sure that, that our, our folks are getting the very best service from these providers. Now, there's ways we can go about that. Maybe, we are a large enough organization now, maybe, where we could actually look at bringing medical staff into our facility that they're contracted to us. We have the Berry Avenue building, it is designed to hold an examination room, a lab area, that kind of thing. And so I think we need to be looking at that. And then the, the second thing that is involved me, and I try to put myself into the shoes of an employee. I've, I've had two prescriptions that have been questioned by our new carrier, and for whatever reason, they, they've, they have questioned and questioned and questioned, although our previous carriers had said, "It's fine, no problem." And according to what I found out, is that when we did this, when we went with a new carrier for our medication, that there were not supposed to be anything, any hiccups like this. Now, because I sit on council, I can pick up the phone and I can call, you know, people on staff. And so I got staff to help me, "Hey, what's going on?" Staff says, "This is not supposed to be happening. We will get in touch with the broker and..." Okay, that's great. But someone who's a new hire or someone who just doesn't know to do that or doesn't think they, you know, maybe they have to go through their supervisor who goes to their supervisor, and it's just a long, drawn-out process, which is, the first thing is, is frustrating as heck. But they shouldn't have to do that. You know, if we say it's, that this is good, then it ought to be good. We should always have that, that top-shelf product to hire and retain our employees. We don't need to be getting, after things are supposed to be settled, a letter from our carrier saying, "Oh, by the way, we've denied this," after they said, "No, it's supposed to be covered." And even in the denial, they don't even give you language of how it's denied, they just say, "It's not covered." We don't need to have our employees having to deal with junk like that. So I, I, I think we do need to get some information from some folks that are, that are tied in or know the industry, and what we can do that, that kind of takes us away from the whims of insurance company that want us to do things to benefit their bottom line, but they're not willing to, to give even good customer service.
Sir, we'll work on that. Is that all you're?
Yes, sir.
That it? Okay, thank you, Mr. Arrowood. Last item is number nine, November 4th, 2025, City of Greer General Election Results. Let it be known that on November the 6th, under the leadership of Chairman Joe Baldwin, the City of Greer Board of Canvassers' Statements and Returns of Votes for the City of Greer Municipal Election were presented for signatures by our staff, and those documents have been duly filed with the proper places. And with that, we have no other means of business. I'll call this meeting adjourned.